Awesome. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April ninth, twenty twenty four town council meeting. I would ask if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask if we could take a brief moment of silence to reflect on all that's happening in the world and close by, both good and bad. Thank you. At this time, I have to announce that our meeting is being audio and video recorded by Elka, and I would ask if there's anyone in the audience who is recording, and if so, if you'd please state your name for the record. I see none. We'll move right along. Jeannie, is there anyone signed up for public comments?
No one has signed up.
Okay, council comments. Councillors, anything happening? Anything going on? Any comments?
Happy spring.
Happy spring. What a beautiful day today.
Happy spring.
Okay, we're gonna move right into the town manager's report.
Sorry, this came so early this month. I hope you could find it in time for the meeting. Good evening, everyone. The FY twenty five draft budget was submitted electronically April first to Town Council and School Committee as per the charter. I just want to thank everybody again for helping create the budget. Literally, everybody in town had a hand in putting this together. It truly was a team effort. Now we'll look forward to the next phase, reviewing the draft budget for adoption by June first. DPW is beginning a construction contract with DMP Marase Construction for new sidewalk on Pleasant Street from Indian Springs Drive to Porter and Pleasant and Maple Shade down the bottom of the hill there. That'll close, that'll close a major sidewalk loop in town that's sort of been earmarked for for construction since we, pretty much since we put the master plan together. Additionally, there'll be a small section from, on Hampden Road from Parker Street to Angela Drive, which is the last street out of town, to sort of get those kiddos out of the neighborhood and, and to either Mountain View or Meadowbrook, really, now that we've finished the run on Parker Street as well. Center town steering district committee has been officially named its members Nicole Polite, Don Starks, Jason Gumpert, Carolyn Pharaohs, Steve Graham, ex officio member of the council Ralph Page, ex officio member of the planning board is Rob Terrell. They're meeting Wednesday for the first time to kind of get their ducks in a row, elect a chair and a vice chair. Then they'll have their first public meeting, April twenty second here at the COA. So that's sort of a review of the whole process, and then we'll have a larger public engagement event May twentieth to kind of get some public participation going, see what people want to see from this, this new district in the center of town. School building committee voted last month to submit the detailed design for the new high school to the MSBA, so we're kind of working through logistics now with Fontaine and their construction plan, which is really exciting. Submittals are being prepared for notice intent, notice of intent for conservation commission and site plan review to application for the planning board. That should all get done. The applicant is yours truly, and it's high on my list of priorities, so. And we're still on schedule for site prep almost immediately when the school is dismissed. There's also a public forum scheduled for this Thursday at six in the high school caf, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed on where we are now. There'll be a celebration of Earth Day this weekend, multiple departments, as well as volunteers from the community. The celebration kicks off Friday, April twelfth at three at the library. There'll be a student art display with prizes, I think. There's crafts demonstrations, and then the cleanup East Long Meadow. I think you can also pick up supplies for the cleanup the next day, and that starts at nine AM at the town hall. So thanks to everybody that's going to participate to help do their part to clean up EL. We're still in the interview process for the planning director. We actually had an interview today. Hopefully, we have a couple of applicants that look promising, so hopefully we can get somebody in that office before, before too long. And obviously, our other glaring opening is the human resources director. We are in the process of going through all our policies and processes and procedures to make sure that that job description is exactly what we need and want, and in concert with everybody else that's in that department. I hope to get that on the street at the end of the week. And we are officially under contract with Whip City Fiber, Westfield Gas and Electric, to begin the fiber to the home project design process. IT Director Ryan Quimby has sort of taken over the administration of that contract and the process. So we may start to see some trucks that we don't recognize in town from either Westfield Gas and Electric, their Whip City Fiber, or their subcontractor PVC, who is handling the design for the system. We got some upcoming events. High school public forum, again, Thursday night at six in the high school cafeteria. Earth Day, as I mentioned, Friday at three at the library, Saturday at nine for the cleanup. The fishing derby, Lions Club Fishing Derby is April thirteenth at Harriage Park, six AM. Get there early. There's an early bird joke in there that I'm not gonna make. Center town district is meeting April twenty second at six. We have our benefits fair, open enrollment, April twenty fifth. That's at Bertrand Park from one to four. And then another coffee with the town manager, May first, ten thirty here at the Council on Aging. And I had one more thing that came up after I sent this to you last week. We have a appointment and swearing in of a member of the Board of Assessors, Hayden Smith. And that's that section of the charter, five point four, that you basically have the right to refuse up to forty-five days. And I apologize for not, and sort of put you on the spot right now, but if you had any appetite, they do have a meeting before your next meeting, and I'd like to get him in there to give Marilyn and Marty some, some help and get his feet wet before he, before their schedule starts kicking off. And obviously, you know, they have a really busy fall with, well, and summer with valuations and then setting the tax rate. So if that's all right with you, I would appreciate a little latitude from that section five point four of the charter. And that's all I got tonight.
Okay, thank you. So what is the council's wish as far as waiving the forty-five day period for Hayden Smith and the Board of Assessors? I have no issue with it. I know the Board of Assessors has always been phenomenal in fielding applicants and finding the right fit, and I have total faith in them. Does anyone have any thoughts? Someone like make a motion?
I will attempt.
Yes.
All right. I move to waive the council's remaining veto period for the appointment of Hayden Smith to the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Having a motion made in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great.
Thank you.
So you used to call and roll call.
Thank you very much.
I did want to mention that Whip City Fiber is already driving around. They have been for weeks.
Yeah.
I've seen their vehicles all over the place, guys running up and down, checking poles and taking notes also. It's nice to see. Hopefully, the engineering will go together pretty quickly and we'll keep it moving right along. Anyone have any questions for our town manager? Okay. Seeing none, we're gonna go right into communications, correspondence, and announcements. Oh, I have one. We were sent a petition by a resident. The petition was requesting a sidewalk be installed on Chestnut Street between Summers Road and Prospect Street. And having looked at the petition, I think this is something that should go on to our sidewalk plan. There's a lot of traffic on that portion of Chestnut Street, and I think it made sense, so I in turn approached Tom, and I asked him if we could get it put onto our master sidewalk plan, so that as soon as funding comes up, we can have it installed. He was agreeable to it, and I think we should send a letter to the petition or just letting her know that we're adding that to our, to our sidewalk plan, and hopefully, when funding is available sooner rather than later, it would be great, but again, we all know that cost of walks is not cheap, and, and it keeps going up, so. But does anyone have any thoughts or comments on adding that?
Do we have a substantial number of projects sort of in the plan still?
Yes.
Sorry, that was a short answer. We still have three minutes to six fifteen.
Yeah, no, it's a pretty comprehensive plan. It obviously has our existing sidewalk network, and then, like I mentioned about Pleasant Street, we're trying to connect these gaps.
I was wondering, is there like a priority, like this street maybe might be more of a strategic priority? Is that within the plan, or is it just kind of?
It's, it's sort of, yeah, it doesn't, it's not listed, one, one through ten or anything, or one through fifty moves more probably apt, but we sort of set it up on, Bruce has a whole bunch of criteria in terms of safety, and are we gonna put in a crosswalk? Do we need a crosswalk? Well, then let's, you know, do the sidewalk, and if we have issue with people crossing the street or what, you know, so there's a, there's a list of things. I'm sure this probably wasn't our first petition for sidewalk either, so it's been a while since I've been in the DPW folder, but I'm sure there's, there's backup information for why all these streets or all these sidewalks ended up on the list in the first place. And the reasons why. So, and I know Bruce always talks with the police chief, and so that's sort of a collaborative effort to find out if, you know, there's been any accidents or calls, or what's safe, what isn't. Yeah, a lot goes into it, but I don't, I don't think they've been prioritized, and that's probably having to do with how much it costs and how much we think we're actually gonna get done. Yeah, I mean, the Pleasant Street, although it's only twenty-five hundred feet, you can imagine that's probably a, there's a lot of retaining walls, and because that's sort of a tough terrain, so that sort of eats away at the budget a lot faster than we could have wanted it to as well, but that's how the plan goes.
Well, it was last summer that we did Parker Street, wasn't it?
Yep.
Phenomenal job. In, out, you did a great job on it. Residents were extremely happy that, you know, nothing was tied up, and I said, very, very well done. Any others?
Yes. With the sidewalk plan for Pleasant Street up to Porter Road, are we gonna be dealing with any retaining walls in that area? I know going up Pleasant on the right, there are a few retaining walls. I didn't know beyond Indian Spring.
Yes.
There will be some.
Yeah, probably coming back down. There's really no way to sort of make it safe and keep the grades right.
Gotcha.
Without cutting back into somebody's yard, which is kind of hard to do from a grading standpoint. And sort of a nightmare from a legal standpoint, in which we have temporary easements and things of that nature.
Oh, I know some folks have logs in the front of their property in that area with spokes sticking out of them in case a car goes rogue. It's gonna take the tires out before it hits the house. I don't know if this will alleviate that.
We do have a, well, it's all over town. It's all over town, but that, that portion of Pleasant Street sees high speed often, and a lot of accidents up and down the hill. So safety will sort of be paramount, and I don't, I haven't seen the final design, but I'm guessing we gotta get the sidewalk across the street somewhere down there. So there'll probably be another rapid flash beacon, you know, the light like at the rail trail, to sort of maybe slow people down and let people indicate or let them know that, because that, that guardrail in particular at the bottom of the hill at Maple Shade has been replaced. Like at least four times since, since I started in seventeen, so. At least, yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to number seven, public hearings. This is a public hearing for required second reading for the proposed bylaw amendment of chapter one eighty, Commission on Disability. This bylaw amendment will replace the words Commission on Disability with Commission for People with Disabilities throughout the chapter. Council members present are Anna Jones, Matt Boucher, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards, Connor O'Shea, and John Torsia. I would ask the clerk to read in the legal notice.
East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on April nine, twenty twenty four, at six fifteen PM in the room on the Council on Aging, located at three twenty-eight North Main Street, for the purpose of addressing a proposed bylaw amendment of chapter one eighty, Commission on Disability. This bylaw amendment will replace the words Commission on Disability with Commission for People with Disabilities throughout the chapter. Public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar. Information relating to this bylaw is available for public inspection at the town clerk's office, sixty Center Square. To view an electronic version of the proposed amendments, please visit www.eastlongmeadow, et cetera. For the council, Jeanne R. Pagletti, town clerk, clerk of the council.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm gonna do a second reading for this because it's short and easy. So under the title, it's chapter one eighty. Originally, it is Commission on Disability. We are changing the on disability to Commission for People with Disabilities. Then under section, subsection one eighty dash two vacancies, we are once again replacing the two words on disability with for people with disabilities. Under subsection one eighty dash three, purpose, the first line, we'll read the purpose of the commission for people with disabilities, and we're removing Commission on Disability. And then under subsection one eighty dash four, powers and duties, under number A, again, we are replacing the words Commission on Disability with title Commission for People with Disabilities. So typically, at this time, we ask the applicant to speak a little bit. Tom, would you like to just give a quick rendering of the reason?
Yep. So this is sort of, this was a request from the commission. This is more in line and appropriate for what a body that does what they do is called. It's, it's a little more human, if you will. And so that, they proposed the, the change. We had Jesse check with the state to make sure there was no follow-ups, and it seems like a lot of municipalities across the Commonwealth are making this change, so.
Yep. Good change.
Yep.
So this is a public hearing, so at this time, I am going to open it up to the public if anyone would like to talk for or against the bylaw change. Don, is there anyone online with their hands up that would like to speak?
Not about.
Okay, I will bring it back to the board then. So I would ask the board what their thoughts are on it, if there's any issues. If no one has any, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion on closing the public hearing? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval then.
I make a motion to approve the proposed bylaw amendment of chapter one hundred eighty, Commission on Disability, as presented.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say, is it a roll?
Why is it a roll call?
I love.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. So with no further discussion, roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I am a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And John? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to orders of the day licensing matters. We have a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple of East Long Meadow, forty-three Chestnut Street, for a graduation party, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, from five PM to twelve, to midnight to twelve.
Second.
Having a motion made in seconded, any discussion, Anna? Hearing none. Matt, a roll call vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes. Our next item is approval of a one-day liquor license. Jeannie, did we want to do this, or are we going to wait for East Village Tavern?
They want to wait until May for this. They're not ready for what they need.
Okay, so we are gonna skip over eight A two, and we are gonna move to the change of hours on the liquor license application for Shaker Bowl.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'm Josh Goldstein, attorney for, from Bacon Wilson, here on behalf of Shaker Bowl Inc.
Adam Oliveri, representing the ownership group of Shaker Bowl Inc.
Okay, what would you like to do?
So we are seeking to change our hours of when we can sell alcoholic beverages. The current time would only permit us to sell alcohol starting at one PM, and due to many requests for special events, certain tournaments and the like, we desire to be able to serve alcohol earlier. And along with that, we have a full breakfast menu, so it makes sense to allow it kind of to go hand in hand there. Also, for now, we're still only serving single-serving beverages. The full, full bar has not, is not in, in progress yet, so we're just simply trying to start into amend the hours so we can easily serve our customers better.
And you did say that you have a breakfast menu, so food, food isn't required to be served whenever alcohol is.
Yeah.
I did notice that under your proposed changed hours, you have Sunday to Saturday, eight AM to one AM.
Right, Sunday should be ten AM.
Okay, so is there any issue in amending the application to make Sunday ten AM?
Well, the only time the hours really show up is when I do the cover form that is approved and signed by the local licensing authority, and that's where I put the hours.
Okay.
Wherever your motion reflects, I will put those hours on that form that you approved that goes with the application.
And do you need any email or mail or anything from them requesting the ten AM instead of the eight AM?
I, no, I don't. I don't have the, the LA, you'd want that on record or?
I don't think it'll hurt to have it on record. It's a simple email.
Yeah, because.
You could, you could revise this cover letter and redate it or something.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Oh, good. Your first tomorrow.
So with that, I'm gonna open it up to the council. Are there any questions with regards to change hours of operation? Marilyn? You probably think like I do, so.
I don't know. This is tough for me because it's eight o'clock in the morning, and you advertise parties, family, fun, and more. And when you came in initially for your, when you got started and how excited we were that your folks were all from East Long Meadow and, and very supportive, and we still feel that way, I'm just, it's the, it's the atmosphere, it's eight o'clock in the morning, kids, I mean, do you really feel you're gonna have that kind of an interest for breakfast in the bowling alley?
Yeah, we picked Adam Oliveri, again, for the record. We picked eight o'clock just to be consistent kind of with what the other liquor licenses were in town, too. I know that we had spoke to a couple other folks in town. It seemed like, you know, the, the likelihood that somebody's coming right at eight o'clock is probably unlikely, but just to give our guests as many options as possible. But there are a lot of special events. Again, these are just single-serve. We've only, since we were in front of you the last time, I think we've added seven or eight additional SKUs. Just to refresh your memory, we, we didn't want to just offer malt-based beverages in the past, so now they're vodka-based, and those manufacturers offer Bloody Marys and mimosa-type drinks. So if there were a shower or an event in the morning, again, with breakfast, we just wanted to give our guests as many options as possible. But these aren't big, you know, hundred, three hundred people events. These are small gatherings in our party room.
And just to go off that, I mean, you know, it, it saves us from having to get a one-day liquor license every time they need an event. Also, there's a limit on how many one-day liquor licenses I think you can get. And also, I mean, it's also spending that money every time you need a one-day liquor license. So I, you know, I, I think it kind of avoids that, and they've already spent a lot of money in getting this place up to par, so.
Actually, I was gonna suggest that, that you go to the single liquor license event. For years, we've done that, and with other, other restaurants in the community, there were certain times where they wanted to extend their hours beyond what was on their license, and so they came in for a special event. I don't, I mean, is it twenty-five? Thirty. Thirty? Rapid. You even have more than thirty parties a year?
Hundred dollars times thirty, thirty events. That was also three thousand dollars.
Yeah, we have parties pretty much every day. One of the things we keep running into is just with our regular birthday parties, as fathers or mothers would like to have a cocktail, eleven is, you know, eleven, eleven-thirty even. If they want to have a beer, we still can't do it because it's one o'clock right now. So just to give ourselves as many options as possible for these special events, and again, keeping it consistent with the other town licenses here in town, I think many of them start at eight AM.
Jeannie, are they open? I'm trying to think of the licenses we do have that. I don't think so. There may be five or six others that.
Well, I'm seconded, so there isn't. I think there were six as far as that started it.
Brunches, I don't know.
And I think that's like Bentley's, well, before it switched over, I know they had come in because they wanted to start serving breakfast and offer mimosas and stuff like that, and that's why that was one of my first questions, are you gonna have food?
Right. I don't mean to be difficult.
No, that's okay.
I just, of how you dubbed yourself when you first came to us, and you know, we had one situation which was unfortunate, and still haven't seen a report on that, but that doesn't matter. You know, I'm just concerned about how this is gonna take place. Is the alcohol gonna be served with, with people seated in the cafe area, or are they gonna be drinking at the, where you bowl?
Yeah, we, we're not gonna change anything with our operations, so it's been the same for fifty years. The service window, everything is served out of a service window, and everything is single-serve, and then you take it to your lane, or if we're having a special event, I don't know if any of you have been down to see it, but we updated the, the party rooms. We have a small room, probably from here to the back wall, where you can have a get-together, and we rent the room out for special occasions. But nothing's changing operationally. We have had no events since we added the liquor. Everything's been going smooth, and, and again, our intention is not to be pouring spirits out of a bottle. These are just single-serve mimosas, Bloody Marys, things of that nature.
So that's gonna be your policy? Single-serve? Single serve?
That's our current policy only for, for a number of reasons. One, because of what you're saying, we're, we're trying to keep a family-friendly atmosphere. And two, for, um, you know, to limit waste and other reasons, you know, the single serve is a nice model. Um, at this time, we don't have any intention of going another direction, but, um, you know, that's really where this came up, just single serve Bloody Marys, mimosas, and things of that nature.
I'm done.
Any other, other concerning comments? Connor?
I personally don't see any issue with it, especially since people can go down the street to the liquor store and purchase at eight A M., so I don't see the difference. Assuming in an establishment.
Thank you.
John?
Definitely don't mind it being moved up to one, but I sort of see where Marilyn's come from. I sort of struggle with eight, eight A M. I know it probably is possible in other areas, but this is the first time I've seen this, um, just being on this body. Um, maybe, I don't know, ten, I don't know, ten A M. since more, but again, I, I could be open data. It just, it's something. I'm, one A M. makes sense because there's a lot, there's a couple places now that are at that time period, um, that are restaurants and other establishments, but, um, I don't know, that morning.
Um, are the majority of the events, um, predominantly birthday parties?
So the, uh, event room is new because the old ownership group was using it as sort of a catch-all. It had chairs and it trash in it, so we really cleaned it up. So we just started renting that out for special events, but we've seen showers and, uh, you know, other type of events other than birthday parties where it's not all children. Um, a lot of our league bowlers like to have some of their special events in our house, so. Um, so no, it's not just birthday parties. It's retirement parties and, and things of other nature. And, and again, I think we're being consistent in our requests, uh, similar to the other five or six liquor licenses here in town. I think they're all eight A M. Is that not correct?
Well, there's more than five or six that have liquor licenses, but I think of the total amount, there's five or six that are, have the eight A M.
Have the eight A.
Okay.
Maybe just if we can. I mean, that's allowed by the state, so that's been, they've been in place for a long time, those licenses, I believe.
Of, of those five or six, are they open at eight A M.?
I don't know. I don't know. I could Google. I do.
Can answer that, um, again, and I think like Bentley's wanted to open early. And I don't know if they're, now that it's East Village, if they're even serving a breakfast, so. I don't know. I don't go there for breakfast, so. Matt, question?
Um, so I think in, you know, favor of consistency, if there are other liquor licenses for eight A M., which I don't know off the top of my head. I don't think we have that information in front of us.
I did, I would, Jeannie, at one, to look it up.
Yeah, I mean.
But again, I, there was, there was more than I thought, actually. I, yeah, I believe there was ten that drink at eight A M., so I don't know. It's been a stupid day. Um, but I think one of the things that, um, the council needs to keep in mind is if there is issues with it, that we can always ask them to come back in and have a discussion and, and make a modification to it. Um, and I think that's where we, where we should be looking, that things can change based on how it works out, and if there's no issues, it's great.
I have those if you want me to.
Matt, would you like to share it?
Yeah.
Uh, Denardo's, Fazio's, Ikura, Peppa's, Redstone Pasta and Pizza Shop. Their hours are eight A M. Mondays through Saturdays.
Good. Nardos.
Well, no, I was, I was.
Many of those don't, aren't even open then.
Right, but it's allowed, and maybe
Allowed, yes.
Maximum hours allowed.
And I think that's what it is, so.
About a hundred licenses for a long time.
So with that, I know this isn't a public hearing, um, but I would ask if there's anyone in the public that wanted to weigh in on it, I would be more than willing to hear from you. Don, is there anyone online?
Oh.
Okay. So I would bring it back to the board. Um, what's the wishes of the board? Would someone like to make a motion?
A second wish.
And just remember that the motion will be altered for Sunday. It starts at ten A M.
Wait, why don't we just do for Sunday, just do like eight A M. right? Because if all those other restaurants were eight A M.
So now that's Sunday.
Oh, all right, all right. Okay, all right, all right, all right.
So John, would you like to make a?
Sure, I will make them. Um, I make a motion to approve of a change of hours of the liquor license application for Shaker Road. One six, uh, one sixty-eight Shaker Road to, uh, Sunday, um, ten A M. to one A M. And through, through Monday through Saturday, eight A M. to one A M.
I'll second that.
Flow.
Yes, I think that's correct. Okay, um, any, any other discussion, Anna? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Okay, you are all set.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So I'll get a revised letter?
Yep, get it for your face tomorrow.
Thank you.
You'll wait to see.
We're thinking positive.
Absolutely right. I can imagine sometimes.
Um, so under eight A four, it's, um, approval of the twenty twenty-four common victular licenses. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Matt, would you like to make a motion? Eight two.
Eight point two.
Well.
All right, I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four common victory-ualer licenses as presented.
Second.
Tofu.
Okay, uh, motion made and seconded. Further discussion? So, um, just to bring everyone up to speed, these were, uh, the licenses that we looked at businesses that we thought required or should require a common victular license, um, that hadn't in the past. And, you know, whether it be, um, someone with picnic tables outside for service or whatever, and we're trying to bring it into a conformity with, uh, with the Board of Health had for a list. So these were ones that, uh, were sent back in.
So we took the, the food permit list and then went through it. And actually, two of them, two of the, uh, managers came back and they said, oh, we're just grab and go. We don't have seating, so I took those off the list. So I think there's just one more I have to follow up, but everybody else came back after two letters and an email.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Awesome. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, um, eight B, financial matters, eight B one. Uh, town manager presenting of F Y twenty-five operational budget as required under Article Six, Section one of the Town Charter.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Hey, thanks.
Do up a budget.
Hey, we did a budget.
Read it into the record.
I will.
I byline, please.
For word. Um, so yeah, everybody, uh, everybody got this April first, Town Council, School Committee, Jeannie. Uh, as, as are, is required. I think everybody should have a hard copy at this point. Um, this is our, uh, in, in sort of simple terms, the, the level services budget, uh, with the exception of, um, we added a position in the school department. Um, out of the general fund, and then we also added a sewer foreman, which we've never had, um, that's completely out of the sewer enterprise fund. Um, I just want to make sure everybody, uh, has everything. We, we sort of tried to keep some of the stuff the same, so we didn't throw you too many curveballs, but, um, obviously, we have a lot of, uh, new faces and new ideas, and so we, we tried to do a little reorganization to try to make things, um, like a little more user-friendly. Uh, I know some of the, uh, lettering is still pretty small on some of the printouts. Um, I've only found three typos so far. Don't bring them up.
I, I was going to mention, um, a governor.
Oh, I spelled it wrong?
There's, there's an extra E.
Unbelievable.
Sorry.
Well, so I found four typos. John found one. I found three.
Oh.
Um, so most of it's the same as last year. The backup information you have is all of our, uh, the munis reports for every department. Um, and all of our, um, all of our other enterprise funds, we got water, sewer, um, stormwater, Elcat, the ambulance fund, as well as trash revolving, council on aging revolving. Um, and the, I think there's some informational stuff in here about, um, rec. Uh, which, which is more informational than anything else. We're, we're, as we went through the process, we found there's a lot of, uh, there, well, this will be a understatement of a, a lot of accounting. Uh, but we have a lot of different funds governed by a lot of different general laws. Um, and so Kim is doing a nice job of correcting, uh, sort of, uh, maybe not mistakes of the past, but
Handled.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we've sort of, we've sort of broadened things into, uh, a better light in terms of explaining things and how we uh, spend our money. Uh, most of which, so they'll, obviously, all these numbers are based on, um, Governor Healy's, I didn't have to spell it. Governor Healy's, uh, budget from January, uh, which is obviously going to change before we finish this review process. Um, we also found out, um, from D L S, uh, that our ambulance fund, uh, we may have to move some things around because you're not allowed to vote to appropriate uh, an amount over what's in the revenue account for the ambulance fund. Which last year we were close, but, uh, the, the auditors, I think, picked it up and Kim got a, a, a note from the state saying, hey, you know, so we may have to, uh, either, we have some stuff that we've, we've, we projected the revenue number for, for the ambulance fund and are like paying half of a capital project out of the ambulance fund and half out of the general fund. Well, if the revenues come back right before the vote, we could actually pull that amount out of the general fund and, and sort of bring that budget down even more. Uh, but that all depends on sort of, it's just a work in progress, right? So where that ends up. Um, so I, I don't know, uh, how much you want to get into, or, or if anybody has any thoughts on, we really want to get this, uh, as best as we can in terms of understanding what we're giving you. Uh, I think I mentioned in the letter that this made a lot of sense to us. But, you know, for the most part, it, it was, it was just the group. And if, if the public thinks they want to see something different, or you want to see something different, uh, by all means, uh, let us know. Uh, this, uh, draft budget is on the east long meadow M A dot gov webpage on the town manager that's been uploaded. So, uh, everybody can find all this information to see where we start. And then, uh, sort of, we'll make a comparison in June on where we end. Um, so with that, um, I don't know if anybody had any questions on format, uh, any of the guts of it, uh, I'll sort of.
Five-year capital plan.
Yep.
Did I miss it, or is it in there somewhere?
Nope, it's not in there. Um,
And we get one.
We can. Um, we'll do that.
Think under, I don't know, whether a rule
Oh, it's in there, yeah.
Is required.
Yep, yeah, I certainly have to vote on it.
A projection
Yep.
Of where things are going over the next five years.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's only a small because things change on a yearly basis, so.
And we will, yeah, I think we, there's a couple iterations that kick it out farther than five. Um, I know that was sort of something that we had talked about in the past about, uh, some of these, uh, doesn't need, necessarily need to be a debt exclusion vote, but some of these larger ticket items, um, sort of need to be planned for outside of our operating capital plan, which we just haven't been funding. Um, so this, like I said, the goal of this draft budget for me and Rebecca and Kim, um, was to sort of curtail our percentage that this, this budget's been rising over the last couple of years, coming back from COVID, which we've done to the tune of a, uh, two point nine five percent increase, uh, across all departments, uh, compared to close to five and a half last year. Um, and then to really bolster our capital spending. Um, so this draft plan has, uh, quite a bit of projects across, uh, you know, obviously, the general fund capital outlay, but, um, we've supplemented with some free cash. Uh, you have a motion tonight that may look confusing, but it'll make sense in a minute, uh, to, uh, to supplement that as well. Um, and then, uh, bonding out of our enterprise funds and, and then some grant opportunities that put us close to about eight and a half million dollars if all the cards fall now. I think we've all been doing this long enough to know that all the cards are not going to fall. Um, but it's certainly more aggressive and more, I think, in line on what we should be doing as a town. Um, in terms of trying to keep up with our capital expenses and infrastructure. Um, so with that, that's my, that's my spiel.
So page eight, nine, and ten of twenty-eight with a really, really small print.
Print.
Yep.
I want to say thank you. Um, we're putting in the explanations of, because as you go through the munis budgets, certain things pop out at you. The percentages seem way off, and
Yep.
But then you go back to that section and the explanations are perfect, and at, at least then you can understand why, why that's happened, such as legal coming out of each department and going into one separate. Um, you know, there's instances like that, uh, I T. with the software and all. Um, you know, once you explain that, hey, this, the reasons why we're moving it, it makes a lot of sense, so.
But, so that was, that was one of the major, uh, was the, that eight, nine, and ten, the numbers don't match on eleven and twelve. So the percentages doesn't look right at the bottom of the page. Uh, so eight, nine, and ten is the actual numbers from the, all the departments and, and how that breaks out, so. But, yeah, thanks. We, uh, again.
I've been working hard on it.
Yeah, well, and, and so has, like I said, so has everybody else. Everybody's been very gracious. I've had to meet with, um, I've had to meet with department heads some more than once. Um, almost everybody, uh, has made concessions, uh, to try to meet some of these goals of our, keeping our spending down and, um, so it, I, I, it truly was a team effort, but, um, I think, I, I just want to say again how great of a job Kim and Olga and the entire finance department does preparing this information, um, so that, so we can all sort of understand it better.
Now, I'm sure everyone's already read through it twice. Have time to ask questions at the next meeting.
Yeah.
A lot of us have, so thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Tom on that?
My question, just to reiterate that comment, I do like this format that it was presented in a lot better. It made it easier to digest and see what the changes actually were. But I also like the fact that we have projections and forecasting, probably for the first time in our town's history, which is important. So, thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
We are on to eight B two. Uh, acceptance of chapter ninety, uh, funding. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to accept the F Y twenty twenty-five, chapter ninety apportionment in the amount of five hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents expended under the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Works and said some to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
This is one of those major accountant things that we've been raising and appropriate chapter
Yes.
Chapter ninety, my. So now we are not doing that anymore.
That's a good thing, man.
It is a very good.
Um, but what I will say is, um, it's a little disappointing when you go back over the last decade or more and see that this sum of money has not really increased from the state at all. Um, it's very similar to where it's been, and you don't get anywhere near as much now as what we got ten years ago for the same amount of money, and, um,
Yep.
It'd be nice if the state was able to keep up on some of it and increase, uh, the amounts, but it has nothing to do with our town government, and we will take what we can get, right? Any other, uh, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed to taking money, I like it. Okay, eight B three, release of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, sixty-three dollars and twenty cents unused American Rescue Plan Act money, is there a motion?
Yes, now my motion to release three hundred and sixty-three thousand, sixty-three dollars and twenty cents in unused American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds from previously approved ARPA projects to unassigned ARPA balance. Account five eight five five zero six, permanent wastewater flow, seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Five eight five five zero eight, IT fuel system management, two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and ninety cents. Five eight five five zero nine, IT student information system, seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Five eight five five one two, P O L marked cruisers two, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and one dollars and thirty cents. Five eight five five one three, P O L unmarked cruiser, one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Five eight five five one four, DPW North Main, TIP, Harkness slash Dearborn, three hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. Total unused ARPA funds, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, sixty-three dollars and twenty cents.
I'll second that. First meeting back, and they give you that motion?
And I did find, didn't I?
Having a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Um, B three, we have the release of nope.
It's the same agenda item, but it's broken down into two motions.
Oh, so we're sharing it.
Yeah.
Really? So is there a motion for that one?
I move to appropriate three hundred eleven thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars for free cash for the North Main Transportation Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, Harkness slash Dearborn Project, account two four one four one three five dash five eight five five one four.
Is there a second? Cue. Motion made and seconded. Tom, would you like to just give the public a quick overview?
Of course. So, the DPW TIP project, which is still ongoing, still going to finish. We don't expect those, so there's a timeline on the ARPA funds, it has to be appropriated by twelve thirty-one twenty-four, which obviously we've appropriated it so that we hit that, but it needs to be spent by twelve thirty-one twenty-six. And we are currently on the TIP project for fiscal twenty-seven. And this money includes construction oversight. So we're, we're worried that we're not going to spend the money in time to, to hit the ARPA reporting time. So we've put the money back and then replaced that account with free cash in the same amount so that we will finish the project and we don't have to worry about the timeline. We will then use the ARPA money that we have remaining to populate this year's capital account, capital fund, or capital projects so that hopefully with items that we're going to purchase and get right away, so that we can appropriate and spend, and we won't have to worry about our it's a little house, housekeeping, so we don't run into any deadlines and then lose the money, which it's, it's early, but we don't want to lose anything, yeah.
Exactly. Nope, that makes a lot of sense, is there any other questions? Okay, we had a motion made, we had a motion seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay, next, B four, rescinding the following bond authorizations, is there a motion for rescinding bond authorizations?
Yes, I make a motion that the town of East Long Meadow rescinds the following amounts that have been authorized to be borrowed, but which are no longer needed for the purpose for which they were initially approved. Unissued amount, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, date of loan order approval, five nineteen, two thousand and eight, for the purpose of landfill. Five hundred dollars, date of loan order approval, five twenty-one, two thousand and twelve, the Harkness pump station. And fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty, five sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, for the water main replacement.
Second.
Thank you. It's nice of you to join us.
Extending your car warranty?
Okay, we have a motion motion seconded, further discussion. So this is more a house cleaning, we went back through different approvals and all and saw that, like, say on the landfill, it was approved, I think it was a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Only took a bond out for a portion of it because we didn't need the rest of it.
Right.
So now we're just rescinding. Okay.
More housekeeping.
More housekeeping, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are going to jump to eight C one, which is approval minutes for February twenty seventh.
I make a motion to approve the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four open session minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention, any abstentions, yes, one. Okay, eight C two, minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four open session minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One.
One abstention, thank you. And then, under C three, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, executive session minutes.
I make a motion to approve the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
Thank you. Moving on, old business, we have no old business listed. Under new business, we have a proposed zone change to the industrial district for one oh four Shaker Road, rear of Shaker Road. And, duh, 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 this is not a public hearing, is there anyone present or online for one oh four Shaker Road?
That's a leak.
Yes.
I don't know who's this.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Could you state your name for the record?
Yes, Philippe Cravo of Arlevak Associates, Forty School Street, Westfield. I'm really just here, I believe, this was just the first reading and to be referred to the other, you know, planning board, to the other boards and commissions, and, you know, go through that process, work, work out the kinks, and then come back to the council with hopefully some positive recommendations.
Okay. Thank you for being here, we greatly appreciate it. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this?
I'll do that. I move that we refer the proposed zone change to industrial zoning district for one oh four Shaker Road, rear Shaker Road, Ray Street, Bond Avenue, and Lewis Lane to the Planning Board for review and recommendation to the Town Council.
I'll second that.
Okay, having a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, okay, it's headed off to the planning board for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Under new business, E two, we have a proposed bylaw amendment to Chapter one sixty, Section four, Board of Assessors. And, Jeannie, this isn't a first reading, is it?
Is it, well, just now.
Okay.
It's a referral.
So this is a referral, so is there a motion to refer?
I move to refer the proposed bylaw amendment to Chapter one sixty, Section four, and Board of Assessors, oath of office certification to the Bylaw Review Committee for review and recommendation to the Town Council.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, E three, we have a proposed bylaw amendment for removal of subsection four fifty dash ten point two C. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to refer the proposed bylaw amendment for the removal of Section four fifty dash ten point two C one of Article ten, ground-mounted photovoltaic installations to the Planning Board for review and recommendation to the Town Council.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, further discussion? So this is an internal, from the Planning Board requesting to look at this, correct, Tom?
This is, yeah, from, yes.
Just making sure everyone knows that it's not from the outside, that this is something that we as a town have reached out to do. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Action items. Does anyone have any action items going ahead to the next meeting, other than dig in and read your budgets? There's a lot of items in it, and a lot of good material.
So I'd be supplemented with a five.
And I tag on to that, if while you're reading your budgets, you have a question, would you email it to either John or myself? As the Financial Oversight Committee is meeting weekly through the end of May until we have a budget to recommend to the council. And that way we can address any questions you may have in the course of our meetings.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, I would make a motion to move into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, taking lease or value of real property for three eighty-two North Main Street. If such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body, then return to then return to open session.
But you're, are you going to vote?
Purpose of adjournment.
We're not sure.
Well, I either leave the webinar, I'll close it to the public, but I'll either end it or leave it in limbo.
I would, I would leave it in limbo, because we're not quite sure. We do have a full council tonight, so.
That's fine.
I second.
Yes.
I seconded.
I made the motion, Marilyn seconded, this is a roll call vote, Anna.
Yes.
Matt, yes, Kathy.
Yes.
I am a yes, Marilyn.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Thank you. Awesome, welcome back, everyone, we have just exited executive session, and I would ask if there's a motion to be made on the floor.
I move to direct the town manager to move forward with the taking of real property at three eighty-two North Main Street for no more than five point six million dollars.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to do a roll call vote, John.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Marilyn.
Yes.
I am a yes, Kathy.
Yes.
Matt, yes, and Anna.
No.
Okay. And then would there be a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I will second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.